Hi, my name is Cassie Breider and this is another episode of Empowered Trans Woman. Today I'm sitting down with Alyssa Crespo, who is running for the city council in the 15th city council in the Bronx, in the state of New York. Did I get this right, Alyssa?
Yes, you got it. It's the 15th council district, yes.
And I understand that you're not only the first trans woman, the first trans woman of color, who's running for this office.
For this level, yes, I am. For city council, we do have, that I know of, two other amazing trans women that have run for the state legislature in Albany, in our state's capital. There are two Caucasian women. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm the first openly transgender woman of color to run. And as far as I'm concerned, the first trans person to run for the local office, in this case, city council.
That's amazing. And it's, I have to say how much of a milestone it is just the simple fact that we have people like you raising their hands and standing up and taking such positions in society, because this is what makes change. This is just, just the visibility from such campaigns already creates a momentum. But, so let me ask you, what was the catalyst that inspired you to make such a bold move?
Well, I always say that I didn't really set out to do this. It wasn't a part of my plan. My life just kind of took me to this moment and it feels right. Notwithstanding, being honest, I live in a community where the unemployment rate and the poverty rate are much higher than they are in the rest of the borough of the Bronx, which is already higher than the rest of the city itself. So it's really concerning for me. That sort of, that leads to social unrest in our community, which we see our crime rate increase as a result. We've got a huge issue with overcrowded public schools in this district. We also have a housing affordability crisis in this city, where people are being priced out of their own neighborhoods because of development. And so these are the things that motivate me to run. And I also would add, another thing that really inspires me and motivates me to run is my generation, right? Being a millennial, we are the largest percentage of American population of the electorate, but we have the lowest voter turnout. And so that's alarming and very concerning for me. And I just can't sit by here idle and not do anything about that.
I'm so glad that you say that. It's, it's so important to mobilize millennials for this upcoming presidential election, but also in general, in terms of the, the local and the smaller elections as well. Let's talk a little bit about your journey. How, how did you get here? I don't know how much you want to disclose in terms of your own personal narrative, but I would love to hear.
Yeah, no, I'm pretty open about things. So I transitioned at 15. I was in high school. During that time, I was hanging out with some older trans women who persuaded me to get into sex work. And so I became a survival sex worker, because that's what I knew. Everyone around me was doing it. And so it was quite, didn't seem like anything out of the ordinary.
And if I can actually ask you to go a step back. At 15, were you in an environment that supported you? Were you, how precarious or nurtured was your situation as a teenager?
I was never disowned by my family or abandoned. In the beginning, it was difficult for my mother to comprehend and to grasp, but she came around quite quickly. However, I didn't really have a close relationship with my mother until I became an adult. So even though she kind of tolerated me being, you know, transitioning, I still always kind of felt alone as a young person. And so, yes, we had an unstable home environment. I watched my mother suffer from a mentally and physically abusive relationship for 16 years of her life. And that taught me great lessons about self-sufficiency and ensuring that I never find myself in a similar situation. So I, from a very young age, was taking care of my mom with the money that I made. We were able to move out. She was able to escape and leave that abusive relationship because of me helping her, right? Because she didn't have much money, but I was able to provide and take care of myself and her. And so sex working got me into trouble with the law, right? So I'm formally incarcerated. I did a very short stint in jail for survival sex work. But it was a defining transformative moment in my life that set me forth on now, that sort of changed my politics. And it made me, you know, I always talk about that as a defining moment, because while I was experiencing that, keep in mind, I was in jail with cisgender men for a couple of days. So it was very traumatic for me. This is part of a larger conversation, right? Why do trans women do sex working so often as we do? And it's because, as you know, I'm sure, despite what we look like, we, at that time, this is 15 years ago, we didn't really have the, this progressive process in terms of getting your gender marker changed or your, you know, updating birth certificates and IDs and things like that. So when we would show up to these interviews, we would have to present our ID, which would reflect the gender we were assigned at birth. And so that comes with a lot of anxiety, right? And feeling uncomfortable.
Yeah, I think that a lot of people miss the tremendous amount of discrimination that trans women undergo, that leads quite often to solutions such as sex work, because retail is not going to immediately jump up and down and hire you. And secretarial is not going to jump up and down.
Right, these are people that still stigmatize you and discriminate you and won't give you a job. And so we are sort of pushed out to fend for ourselves and to find ways to survive. And oftentimes, we do what we see other people doing in our circle. And, you know, it leads, it's just, it is, it's a, it's an unfortunate fact that trans women and sex working go hand in hand. However, I do want to make it clear, not all trans women are sex workers, right? Many of us have been able to get out of that lifestyle or maybe have never been in it from the, from the get-go. We are doing so many things now.
Absolutely. And something that, something that I should mention to you that intersects with what you're talking about is there are two initiatives I participate in that make me very interested in this part of your story. I volunteer every couple of weeks. I spend the day at the maximum security prison in Salem, Oregon, where I lead a support group for trans women who are incarcerated in an all-male maximum security prison. There's about 22 of them currently. So I've gotten exposed to some of the pretty harsh conditions that they're exposed to. Separately from that, and not necessarily in the trans space, I run a Facebook page called Smart Sluts, which is about female sexuality and empowerment. And so I have interviewed people who have come from sex work, as well as sexologists, as well as surrogates and stuff like that. And so the issue of sex worker rights is something that's been kind of bubbling up as well, because it's, it's really a faulty, faulty system in the way that society looks at this. I'm wondering if you could say that to what extent that experience empowered you and to what extent that experience traumatized you maybe?
Well, it's definitely not something I wanted to do, right? It's, it's dangerous, right? We're putting ourselves in front of strangers that we don't know who can harm us. But again, so often we feel like this is our only way out, right? And for many of us, that's the case. We don't have another way of making a living and paying for the cost of rent or whatever the case may be. But interesting enough, going off of what you were saying a moment ago, there is a debate in the state of New York on decriminalizing sex work. We have in the state legislature, in one of the committees, I believe, that would, that would essentially decriminalize sex work. And it's caused a big controversy in New York, because as you can imagine, there are some legislators who come from moderate or conservative districts where constituents are, are not for decriminalizing sex work. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding. Sex work is work. And there's a difference between legalizing sex work and decriminalizing sex work. That's two totally different things. But we're not calling for legalizing it yet. We're just calling for the decriminalizing of sex workers, right? This is consensual stuff. This is not human trafficking. This is two people, adults, making the decision to do what they want, right? I support decriminalizing sex work. But there's another debate happening in the state of New York. And we have these archaic penal laws in the state of New York. And one of them is called Section 240.37. And it's loitering with the intent of soliciting prostitution. So this is, the way that this is being used is it's essentially a stop and frisk for trans people, particularly trans people of color. And so you could be standing out waiting for the bus. You could be hailing a taxi. You could be walking down the street with your, and a police officer can arrest you and claim that you were loitering with the intent of sex working because of how you were dressed. You had a revealing shirt. They can basically use any bogus made-up information to try and paint you out as doing something illegal, when in fact, you may not have been doing that.
Right, so something as simple as standing at the bus stop while trans becomes very similar to something as driving while black.
So we're fighting, we're fighting here in New York to repeal that law. And then we have another fight on our hands to decriminalize sex work. But we wanted to separate those two things, because they're very different.
That makes sense. And I appreciate the distinction between decriminalization and legalization. I think that was important for you to point out.
In New York, we're very fortunate. LGBTQ people and TGNC people are fortunate to live in New York, especially New York City in particular, because we have so many resources and programs for us here. That's not the case for people in rural communities or in the middle of the country or maybe even upstate New York. That may not be the case. And so I'm fortunate to live in the city. We remember that. There are a lot of allies here and a lot of programs that care of us in the city. People flock to the city from all over the world for these reasons. But just to sort of give you an idea of how I ended up where I am now, in college, I studied political science. I graduated my bachelor's in political science. And then I started internships. This was right around 2016, during this very tumultuous time in this country where we elected a new president. And we had a lot of young people at the time that were really getting involved in civic engagement and paying attention and studying and learning how, how these things work. And I was one of them. And so I interned for the Speaker of the State Assembly here in New York. I interned for a city council member. And eventually I started working last year as the education liaison for the Bronx Borough President. It's a borough-wide office. And in that role, I have had the honor of dealing with lots of Bronx families, particularly concerned mothers who are on calls all the time about issues of their children being bullied or their children not receiving the services that they're mandated and obligated to receive because they may be a special ed student. So many things that are happening in our public schools. And it, it's another motivating factor for me to run for office, because I cannot tell you the praise that I hear, the mismanagement and the corruption that happens in our public school system here in New York City is absurd. And so somebody's got to do something about that as well.
You know, I, I find your story captivating. And I'm wondering to what degree would you be able to, to say, and of course, this is an estimate, but to what extent do you think that you're typical of your cohort? To what extent you're an outlier? That, that this is a passion and a fire in your belly that you have? Or if it's shared across the boards? And I'm kind of fishing a little bit, because I am really hopeful that there is a little bit of an Arab Spring or an Occupy Wall Street resurgence happening among millennials. And I don't know to what extent that's the case. Could you speak to that?
Well, again, this goes back to the point I made before, right? We are the largest percentage of the American electorate as we speak, but our voter turnout rate is extremely low. In fact, the lowest among any age bracket of Americans. And so it may seem like we are being involved and we're engaged because we post a lot of things on social media. We make a lot of noise and we are a very opinionated generation. But I'm still very concerned and alarmed at our voter turnout rate. And for me, you can make all the noise you want, but if you do not exercise your constitutional right to vote at the voting booth on election day, then it's all for nothing. And so the numbers are rising. I can bet if you went back and looked at the numbers of young people who have voted over the last 10 or 20 years, you will see that number slowly but surely rising, but not at the pace and at the rate that it should in compare, in comparison to the size of our population. And I'm talking about 18 to 35-year-olds.
Yeah, that's primarily what I was focusing on. So that pretty much answers my question. Let's hope, right? Let's hope that this is something that, that catches and captivates a lot more people of this generation, which is so needed right now.
Yeah, and so it's very rare to have the odds of someone, first of all, for me to go where I came from to where I am now, right? The story of my life, the path going from being a young, low-income trans woman of color who fell into the traps of sex working, got out of it, which is very hard in and of itself. Was able to escape that lifestyle, privileged enough to go back to school, to working and get my life back on track, to now working for an elected official in the Bronx and now running my own city council campaign. That is not very common, especially for my people. That is a very rare story. And I feel the weight of my community on my shoulders. And it's very important for me to show people, we can do this. We're not defined by our past. And if we want to get into this arena, we have the right to do it and we can do it. So that's, I'm hoping to inspire a whole new generation of, not only Bronxites, but, you know, people all across New York City.
And this is inspirational for young trans women as well, because, I mean, that was the whole thrust and, and reason for Empowered Trans Woman is that I wanted to shine, to shine light on the fact that we, our stories are not just victim stories. We can stand proud and we can overcome.
We may come from that, but that doesn't define where we're heading in the future, right? And so there was a period of time where I was afraid to step out and be public about my life and share these intimate details or run for office, because I kept telling myself, well, you know, the world is not ready for a candidate like you. And when I got over that and I realized that every reason that I thought would work against me would actually probably work in my benefit and for me, it was just this epiphany I had. And it was an empowering and liberating moment. And I said, well, no, actually, you know what? I'm at a point in my life where I'm so secure with who I am and in my own skin. And it's took me 29 years to get here and it feels great. And everything, like I said, everything I thought would disqualify me is part of my story. It makes the compelling and unique story. And so I'm, I'm giving it, I'm giving it a go. I'm going to give it my best shot.
Absolutely. And I think that we're finding this kind of a turning point in our culture, that we can own our stories proudly and that we don't have to do this respectability politics journey. In my own sense, I shied away from pursuing masters in, as a therapist, because I kind of carried this internalized transphobia in me of who's going to want to listen to me. And now I'm finding more and more sexologists and therapists around me encouraging me, because they're saying there's a huge pool of people that want to hear from somebody with my journey. One thought that, that this inspired me to, to hear more about is the fact that we, we, we can get to these points if we have people that give us a chance, if we have people that believe in us and that see more than the stereotype in us. And it sounds like you've had people like that in your life. So what were the, what were the different points where you met somebody who, who stood for you or believed in you?
Well, my family is very supportive of me. I've had, it's been a journey in terms of my, my mother, my godmother, my relatives, siblings. Everyone is so supportive of me. And, you know, they encourage me. And so that's very helpful. And I found, you know, I, I have to talk about this, right? Because as a trans person running for office, there is a political, you know, there's what we call the machine, right? The establishment, for lack of a better term. In any county that you're running for office, they have a county committee or what people call a machine. And usually you have to sort of pay your dues and reach out to these people out of respect and, you know, let them know, hey, I want to run for office. And if you're lucky enough, they'll support you and take you under their wing and you'll be included in the county party, right? And you'll have a much easier journey getting elected to office. So someone like me, who's familiar and friendly with several of the members of the Bronx Democratic Party, when I started to come out and be, be trans and get hired and work for these people, it let me know that there is some sort of willingness for these people to open up and accept people like me into their circle. The issue is, it's political, right? So the county chairman or chairwoman may want to embrace you, but may be thinking, well, what are my constituents going to think? Because these are also elected officials, right? They may be in favor of something, but again, they're concerned what their voters are going to think of them by embracing a trans woman into local office in the Bronx. So you have all these political nuances that you have to think about when you decide to take on this type of, of journey and you decide to run for office as a trans person. I mean, everyone has to think about these things, but it's a little bit more interesting when you're doing it as, as a trans person and as the first openly trans person to do it. You know, is the Bronx ready for a transgender city councilwoman? I like to be positive and optimistic and think that a lot of people in the Bronx are open to electing a transgender person, especially one that has a, a story like mine, that they may be able to resonate with, right? A lot of people in the Bronx have transgender children, cousins, brothers, sisters, parents. So, you know, it's not that out of the ordinary these days. But we do have a socially conservative population in the Bronx, an older generation in the Bronx, that I'm not quite sure that they're convinced. But we'll see. We'll see on election day.
How does sexism affect all this? To what extent is the Latinx and the Black demographic receptive to the idea of a woman? To the idea of a woman running for office? How, how chauvinistic an environment is it?
We've always had an issue with not having equal representation in our government, in particular for women. We are seeing that change, right? We have the most women elected to Congress in the country than ever before. We are seeing more women of color being elected state to state and in local races. We still don't have gender parity in our city government, at least not here in New York City. We have, the city council is made up of 51 members and only 12 are women. There are five queer people. All five of them will be leaving next year. So there's a lot of panic amongst the LGBT community here in New York City to make sure that we don't lose those five seats, that we can gain them plus more. But the conversation about gender parity and electing more women has always been something that has been talked about historically in the state of New York. I'm optimistic about where things are going. Can we do better? Yes, we still haven't, we're still not, you know, there are more women in New York than there are men. And, but there are more men in our legislature than there are women, a lot more men. So we still have some work to do to get some real gender equity, particular equity for the T in LGBT.
Yes, absolutely. What would you say are the key issues that, that matter to you? And I'm kind of asking you as a politician, but I'm also asking you as a person, if, if you want to go, if you can be a force of change in the world, what would be the key things that you would focus, that you would like to leave a mark on?
I want people to regain their faith in their government, which is a task I probably can't take on by myself. But I'm noticing, particularly in underserved, marginalized communities, low-income areas, people have just sort of given up on their government. They don't believe in them. They think that they're corrupt. They have no faith in them. And as a result, they're not politically engaged. They don't vote. They don't donate. They don't believe that we have their best interests at heart. So for me, that is a big, that's something big that I want to try to work on, is to show people that not all of us are corrupt. Not all of us are egomax. Some of us actually care and want to improve and improve the quality of life for our residents in our districts.
I want to ask you a loaded question. And you can answer as obliquely as you want to, if you want to avoid answering. But in your experience so far in politics, having been in some rooms, having been in, in, in the soup, do you find reason to be inspired and to be idealistic? Or do you find yourself growing cynical? What's been your impression so far of the system?
It all depends where I am and with what elected official I'm with. There are some who are great people, who are working really hard to change people's lives for the better. And there are some that I think are a little bit too entrenched in their power and in their titles and who are more concerned with being recognized for being an elected official and their track record than actually helping and improving people's lives. I think sometimes people forget what this is all really about.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that it could also be a systemic thing. You know, I'm thinking of teachers, for example. They get in bright-eyed and bushy-tailed in order to change the minds and hearts of children. And then they get beaten down by the system and they get low pay for several years and nobody is helping them buy crayons for the kids. And at some point, they may get into this eh, whatever kind of a mode. I want to pivot a little bit and ask you a little bit about what, how you see the Bronx today in terms of LGBT rights and trans rights specifically, compared to the way, the way it was 10, 15 years ago, when you were transitioning, when you were growing up? How has it changed for the better? Has it changed for the worse in any regard?
The Bronx has changed for the better on all levels. Back in the seventies, there was this social phenomenon, the Bronx is burning. There was rumble everywhere. There were buildings being burnt to the ground. And it was a stigma and a perception that we have to this day have not been able to shake off here in the Bronx. However, if you look at the rate of unemployment, if you look at the salary, people in the Bronx are better off today than they were 10 years ago, than they were 20 years ago. There's lots of development coming in. Lots of people moving into the borough of the Bronx. So we're improving, but again, we have to make sure that that's not at the expense of local Bronxites that have been here for generations.
Yeah, of course. So it doesn't become a gentrified kind of scenario.
And so the Bronx is kind of like the last place to be gentrified. And it's happening. There's nothing we can do about it. We just need to make sure that community members have a seat at the table and they get to negotiate in these rezoning agreements and things like that. But I like where the Bronx is heading. You know, there's things that we have here that we didn't have before. But again, we have to, we must make sure that Bronxites are not being priced out of their homes and that we are taking care of everyone in the Bronx.
Sounds good. And then specifically in terms of trans rights, have you seen an evolution over the last decade maybe or so?
I would say so. I would say, it's hard to say that, because we look at how many deaths, you know, how many trans women of color were murdered last year and this year. And it's hard to, to say that there have been improvements, but there have been. The reality is that we're more visible these days. There's a lot more work to do. Trans and gender non-conforming and LGBTQ youths are some of the, in terms of homeless youth, they hold the largest percentage of that, right? And so the, there are so many young LGBTQ folks in New York City without a home, who are food insecure. And so there's so much work to be done. And so when I say that we are making improvements and that I'm hopeful and optimistic with what the future holds, I just want to make sure that we don't forget that there are still issues that we are facing right now as we speak. And so our trans people need rights for emergency shelters, just like people, victims of domestic abuse have. When they're in emergency shelters, they get priority. We need that for LGBTQ youth and TGNC youth, they need that. And we need to make sure that we're providing a pathway to public higher education for trans and gender non-conforming people.
I really like the parody that you brought up. And I, I would like to highlight it and bring it to the forefront a little bit, because the, the journey to freedom, the, the escape from abuse that would be, and that would be experienced by a person experiencing domestic violence, it resonates. There's a lot of similarities with what queer youth might experience in an environment that's hostile.
Yeah, I mean, we know this story, right? We're part of a community. So we know that all too often, young people are kicked out of their homes, abandoned, right? For being, for, for who they are, right? For their sexual orientation or gender identity. And we know that that leads to homelessness, that leads to drug use, that leads to criminalization, that leads to sex work, survival sex work. It leads to so many things. It's, it's a cycle. And so while the state of LGBTQ folks in America is changing and progressing slowly but surely, our issues are still there. They haven't gone away. Marriage equality didn't get rid of, you know, the issues that... the issues that Black and Brown young LGBTQ people face.
What do you think of uh, this was in the news, maybe two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, the transgender tipping point? Do you think we've had a tipping point? Do you think it's still in the coming? How, how do you see the culture responding to us in general?
Well, there was once upon a time where we were not getting casted as, you know, people on daytime TV or in movies or on shows on cable TV or, you know, being able to write books that sell and make money. Um you know, we are, we're definitely, visibility has increased for us. But with that visibility also comes uh consequences, right? We see the number of trans people, trans women of color who have been murdered last year and this year. And I can't help but to think of that when we have this conversation about where we're heading because it's such a paradox, it's such an irony that here we are, we have a Black woman on the, a Black trans woman on the cover of Time Magazine, which is so historic and innovative. And yet, Black trans women are still being murdered at much higher rates than their cisgender counterparts.
Would you say that the Bronx reflects similar values as, for example, the other boroughs in terms of LGBT acceptance? Or do you think that there's a little bit more of a conservative, reluctant kind of a, uh, an embrace?
Yeah, there might be a slightly more conservative population in the Bronx than, say, Manhattan or, you know, but there's conservative enclaves in all of our boroughs. Queens has them, Brooklyn has them. Uh Manhattan may be the most liberal borough in New York City. Staten Island certainly has a conservative enclave. Um it's weird, the state of, of LGBTQ politics in the Bronx, there definitely are more of us joining uh being, in getting involved, taking up spaces, pushing our way through. Um we still have very few trans people, openly trans people that have been hired by elected officials. Um but we're, we're, we're setting the course in the Bronx. And I'm, I'm grateful for my, for my boss who has hired me. Um because that's not, that's something that no one could imagine, you know, ten years ago.
Absolutely.
So we're making stride, but I do think the Bronx has some improvements to make. There's more work to be done uh for trans people to be accepted and feel comfortable in the Bronx. And I hope that my candidacy can address that.
One of the things about New York, New York City, it, uh New York State in general, but New York City as well, is that it has implemented some systems and some um, some recourse, especially in terms of health insurance and stuff like that, that allows trans women to transition.
Yeah, we've been at the forefront of a lot of things um in terms of access to healthcare um and, you know, access to gender reaffirming and confirming surgeries that are paid for. We have some of the strongest uh workplace protections in terms of anti-discrimination protections in the state and local level. Politically, politicians in the state of New York are very much in support of our community.
What would you say to uh those, uh those viewers that are watching that are in New York State or even specifically in New York City? How could they support your campaign? What could they do to help?
So if they go on my Facebook page, there is a link there. A donation would be fantastic. Uh this is a grassroots, people powered campaign. Um you know, I'm not part of a wealthy family, so I'm not well connected. So um I am gonna need help financially to be able to uh stand a good chance and be a viable candidate in this race. Because obviously, I'm not running alone, there are other people running for this seat. Particularly for my community, if you wanna see real gender parity and equality in our city government, I would hope that people would donate whatever they can, people across the United States, other people from our community that may wanna see one of us win and do something historic. I would hope that they would visit my page and click the link in my bio.
Absolutely. And I'll include that information with the video when I post it in, in the links. Thank you so much, Alisa. Are there any last thoughts that you wanna communicate to, uh to, especially to the, the fifteen year old Latina trans woman who might be watching this from the Bronx?
I'm glad you said that. I want her to know that she can do whatever it is that she puts her mind to and that she doesn't have to fit the stereotype of what a trans woman of color is or should be. And that there are people working to break the glass ceiling so that her life can be easier. And just be yourself and get out there and take up space and never be afraid of who you are because you're beautiful.
That was wonderfully said. This has been another episode of Empower Trans Woman. Thank you so much, Alisa.
Thank you, Cassie.